Aye. Trustee House?
Aye.
Trustee Belgium?
Aye.
The motion passed to appoint trustee House as Mayor of Dalton.
Thank you very much clerk and welcome again to all that are present with us. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance for all that we stand in face of flag.
Pledge of Allegiance.
Stood at the flag. United States of America.
And to the Republic where what stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If I may ask for trustee Valderys to lead us in prayer. You have a prayer? Prayer for us? See if we can get our microphone.
Valderys start.
Thank you, good evening everybody. Can I have everybody just stand and bow your heads? Heavenly Father, I come to you in the name of Jesus just to praise your name another day and thank you for your mercy and grace that you have stored upon us. I asked in the name of Jesus that you put your loving arms around this village, guide us all in the direction that you want us to go and not in the direction that we want to go. I want to also, Father, ask you to put your loving arms around the four trustees and the clerk and the attorneys that sit up here today and the residents of this village. Father, protect them as they go on their day by day journey. Give them traveling mercy and grace and let this meeting be productive and go smooth as possible according to your will in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
Thank you very much for that prayer. So, I'm gonna lead off with general announcements. A few things that I want to recognize for you and to colleagues on the board. First, I want to thank the Longheart District for their continued partnership. And within this, the work of the board of trustees, without that partnership, it would not have allowed for us to have meetings in this fashion and convenience. So, I really want to give special thanks to Commissioner Gail Towers, Commissioner Howard Shell, Commissioner Willis Harris, Commissioner Sandra Wells, being bashful in the back over there, as well as the board president, Cleo Jones. We really want to give thanks and acknowledgement for this great space. Secondarily, we, uh, we, this meeting was called, I want to make sure that we document this, was properly called, meeting notice was posted Monday evening, approximately 8:30 in the evening, giving more than the 48 hour required notification. Further, the meeting notification was sent via email to all members of the board, the mayor, all six trustees, as well as village administrator and the attorneys that represent both the mayor's office and those legislative councils. So, all are invited. We want to make sure that we conduct meetings in the proper manner and I want to make sure that we have that listed on record. I will yield to any trustees and all that if I can get the liberty of last coming of general comments, because I do have one point I want to make, but I want to give to any of my colleagues on the board if they have comments at this time.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Thank you for attending this evening's board meeting. Just want to announce Saturday, um, this coming, oh, I'm sorry, it's in March. I apologize. It is March, but we have a team of the trustees, it's every second Saturday, March the 9th, 9:30 a.m., right in this building here, 14700 Evers, the Lester Long Fieldhouse. It gives the residents a chance to tell us what you would like to see in the village. It's a, it's a, not a one-way street. This is a two-way street, but we listen and take in what the residents would like to see happen in the village. So, all are invited. We hope everyone can attend and again, thank you for coming out this evening.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Just now, and I am so glad today that attorney Mergo, the attorney micrograph and attorney Frazier has greeted us with their presence, because a lot of times you keep hearing, "It's a secret squirrel meeting," and we get a gentleman and say, "It's a secret squirrel meeting," but we just want everyone to know that the four of us, plus the clerks, we are doing what is legal, what is right by the community, and we will continue to right things out. So, uh, when we sit here, it's a lot of, I mean, you see, a lot of us get support from you guys, but there are some that don't support us, but we want to let everybody know, and I'm saying this for me, that we thank you for all the prayers, for all of the emails that come through, but we are going to continue to work and do what's best for the village of Dalton.
Thank you, dear. Hello, everyone, happy Thursday. I would like to make an announcement for all the seniors. Um, they are, Cook County, our North Township assessor, Cassandra Elston, and our Illinois State Representative, Thaddeus Jones, is hosting a free tax return service for seniors. So, for any senior who have not completed their taxes yet, this is totally free, they're 65 years of age or older, total household income of $65,000 or less. You must have a photo ID and you must reside in the 29th Legislative District of North Township. But this event will be held at 1463 Ring Road in Calumet City, Illinois, from February the 19th to April the 14th. So, I would beg you seniors, please come out and join them until you can get that service free of charge. I also want to make a comment in regards to our village. Um, this is no ordinary meeting, right? We normally have special meetings, but this meeting is different. This meeting is an attempt for this legislative board to save Dalton. That's, that's our goal right now. Um, if you haven't registered for voting, please do for this upcoming election. Um, we, we love our town, a lot of us have been here forever, we don't want to leave. This is about transparency. This is not a dictatorship. This is a democracy and this is why we are here tonight. So, I want to thank all the residents for your love, support, kind words, and just know that no matter how tough things seem to get, at least we have each other and we're going to continue to show up and do the job that you all elected us to do, no matter what, and we thank you.
Thank you very much trustee. Uh, so I wanted to briefly, on my comments, take a moment to clear up misinformation and generally I try not to address misinformation or things like that. However, um, I, I'm appreciative of the residents of the community that give phone calls and messages. So, after the last board meeting, I get some calls that say, "Oh, thank you, how are you doing? Is everything okay?" This was a nice meeting, but really, really tough. And I'm thinking and talking about the meeting and they say, "Oh, you know, you got picked up over at U S B." What are you talking about? And then further, I think there was a couple stories and there's a ton of misinformation. I try to, I really do not try to be into it, but I want to just make sure that I clearly state for the record, I've never been picked up. I've never been arrested or walked out by anybody. And my short response to some of those residents was, there's one person on the board who hasn't looked shot. And we go to that person. But I say that not to be divisive in nature or anything else like that, because those are harsh. I say that because, um, the overall attempt is that as we get closer to it, we try to talk about the issues and focus on the issues. And then as we get closer, this fear campaign begins. So, I want to make sure that I make this thing for the record as we get into this meeting, uh, that none of that has ever happened in our place to report. My laptop is right here. So, now that we've kind of cleared that up and hopefully lightened it a little bit, grateful really for all, for everybody being present. I will say that the, uh, so next up, next up on our board, there were some other comments made about every meeting we come in, we talk about legislative council and the council needs to be terminated for various reasons and it repeatedly goes on. At many meetings, we do not, we do not request legislative council to be present. The reason for that being that there is a cost. We're right, we're mindful of recognizing there is a cost. So, uh, the best use of, uh, of the time or tax dollars that we're going to try to spend is we don't feel this to have somebody sitting present at a meeting. However, we've gotten many, many questions and many calls about what's legal? How is this going on? What, what things, what other things can we do? So, this evening, the board of trustees has asked that our legislative attorney show up and they graciously and willingly, kind of join us, so I want to give a special thanks and acknowledgement to attorney Burke Olson, attorney Frazier, attorney McGrath. And I'm also going to yield the floor to them for a moment, just to acknowledge for this meeting.
Thank you trustee House. So, my name is Burke Olson, sitting to my left is Felicia Frazier, sitting to her left is Mike McGrath. We are the three managing partners of our law firm, 21 members of law firm, 50 people employed in our firm. We all don't go to meetings together ever, because we have a lot of meetings that we have to cover and don't burden or encumber a municipality with three of us going. Tonight, we're doing the same thing. We are not charging for our appearances here tonight, because we shouldn't be here. If the village was operating in the fashion that every other municipality operates, we wouldn't be here, but some things have to be said tonight and some things have to be done tonight. And it is very meritorious and heroic that this board has now stepped forward to do what has to be done to strengthen this village out. So, number, the number one thing I have to say is, uh, the mayor has railed on me personally, I only watched the last one, and I guess she does this every meeting, about me bringing chaos to the municipalities that we serve. I have been a lawyer for 51 years. And I was five years old.
Somebody tell me if y'all can hear this.
We represent 26 municipalities as the village attorney or legislative council and another 30 municipalities, school districts, township, park districts as a special counsel or general counsel. We don't bring chaos, we bring competent legal counsel. Ms. Henyer talked about the Village of Robbins and how I brought chaos to Robbins. I started with Dr. Irene Brody in 1982, when she was elected mayor of the Village of Robbins, one of the most magnificent, magnificent females I have ever met. I served with Dr. Brody until the day she retired, over 30 years, many years, uh, working pro bono for Robbins, because Robbins couldn't, couldn't pay us. They have another mayor now who chose to do something different, that was his prerogative. Uh, please don't tell me about Robbins, that I, I invested a good part of my life in with Dr. Brody. Uh, she talked about Sawt Village and we brought chaos to Sawt Village. We have been the village attorneys or legislative council for over 15 years in Sawt Village. Mike McGrath serves as legislative council there. Even though the, the mayor and the trustees don't get along real well, we still do business, we still have meetings, we still put things on the agenda. Uh, even though there's not political harmony, there is at least legislative harmony and we are the legislative council and do along very well. She talked about the Village of Maywood and how I got fired from Maywood. I did. I served her three months until the young mayor was arrested on the middle of the Eisenhower Expressway in a Maywood Tahoe. Does Tahoe sound familiar? I'll sleep.
Because it's lab, I can't.
Yeah, I was fired by that mayor. That was absolutely dreadful. And fourthly, she said I brought chaos to University Park. Well, uh, you can ask the mayor and all six trustees, who don't get along, what chaos I had brought to University Park. They wanted to come tonight, write a letter and tell the fine people of Dalton what our firm has done to stabilize the legal practice and really help the village with their water problems and just winning a case in this certain part of Lake County on behalf of the people of University Park. She, she lied and I wish she was here so I can tell her to her face. Did she lie and continues to lie about so many things on this municipality? But lying is, is not the worst thing that she does. We're going to go through things, the Air Force Lieutenant House is going to take a board through a number of lights tonight, which will expose further what she has done to this municipality. So, again, I can go on, but we all want to go home, be at dinner and we get to the real business of the night, which is the serious business that's not just your business, but has now become and is going to become the business of elected officials in this state of Illinois, who can do something to help the people of Dalton. Thank you for the opportunity.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much attorney. Uh, with that being said, we'll go to our next item on the agenda, which is the village's first report. I yield to clerk key.
Thank you Mayor of Dalton. Um, I'm requesting the board approval of minutes that I originally submitted on the, um, February 5th board meeting, but I was not allowed to get approval of these minutes, so I'm asking the board to approve them now. So, let me just list out the minutes that I requested approval. Special board meeting of the trustees, Monday, September 25th, 2023. Regular board meeting of the trustees, Monday, December 4th, 2023. Special board meetings of the board of trustees, Tuesday, December 5th, 2023. Regular board meeting of the trustees, Tuesday, January 24th.
Said he was not.
And special board meeting of the trustees, Wednesday, January 24th.
He made it a matter of record, he said that did not happen.
If you guys can approve the minutes that I have prior, sent to you prior, I appreciate it. I make a motion to approve the damn minutes.
Second. Hearing the motion and second, any discussion? Hearing none, clerk key, please, off road.
Trustee Norwood? Trustee Tammy Brown? Aye. Trustee House?
Aye.
Trustee Belgium?
Aye.
Motion passed to finally pass the minutes. Thank you very much.
Mayor, Mayor?
Uh, yes.
Just to explain to the audience, to the people of Dalton, the reason that the minutes have to be approved in the special meeting is Ms. Henyer will not allow the minutes to be put on the agenda, because she doesn't want to keep track of what the board is doing for the people of Dalton. Uh, the minutes are supposed to come up at the next board meeting or, or two board meetings and it's, it's an embarrassment to go back to September of 2023 to approve minutes of what happened in September of 2023. Again, the trustees have to use this vehicle of a special meeting to do order.
Yes, he did a matter of record.
Thank you very much attorney. Uh, first, there is, we have no business listed on this agenda. First order of business, um, and turn, on our new, new business. First is transferring all current litigation files from the Delgado Law Group to Olson, Murphy, Frazier and McGrath. I'll tell you why I put this on this, on the agenda. This was placed because at the present time, our village, the group does not have a village attorney assigned to it. The attorney that was previously assigned resigned, because they were unable to work with the mayor in this administration. After that time, we've gone with no appointed or nominated, uh, attorney in record and a lot of the files have been given to the Delgado Law Group without board approval. So, as the board, and additionally, we're not getting up to date information on these cases and once we, and, and we have to ultimately vote to settle, not tell. And as a board, we need to be informed on what's going on, so that we know potential losses and the direction that we're going with that case. So, with, uh, having legislative council, with no, no attorney being appointed president at this time, we are requesting that all files be transferred to Delgado Law Group to the attorney's office that will communicate with us. Uh, so I made a motion at this time that we transfer all files from Delgado to Olson, Murphy, Frazier and McGrath. And that's for second.
One thing we won't do is argue on my page. We're going to keep this clean and we're going to be respectful of everyone that's on my line. Thank you.
A lot of stuff that we probably are not going to be able to discuss, because, um, we now have, you know, we're on executive session. But the issue is, um, and I'll say for me, is that some of these cases that come about, we don't know about until, um, they're halfway finished or somebody has cut somebody a deal and then we're bothered to executive session to make some type of wrongful decision on it. Um, with having corporate counsel, corporate counsel that works for the benefit of everyone should be transparent enough to when these cases are filed, that we should get a copy of it or know about it and then when we need to make executive decisions, we will be informed of what we're doing. There are several cases that have slid through the cracks and since we didn't know about it, we wound up being the people and now we're going to have to pay our money. So, this is not about saying that we just want to hire someone that represents us. We want someone that's going to be transparent, that we know that we can minimize the cost of the backs of the residents.
Thank you trustee, I'm going to yield to attorney Olson as well.
Mayor House, uh, we have a list of the cases, there's, there's at least 33 pending cases against the village and I think another one was, uh, was just recently, recently filed. Uh, I, I don't think there's this many cases in all of our municipalities combined and, and it is keeping the money that should be used for the people and paying lawyers and paying plaintiffs, because Dalton isn't getting, um, representation that it should. That's why we have to take these cases, get them in order and, and win them. We will not take any cases that conflict with us. In other words, there's a case where we sued the municipality, the board told us to sue the municipality, because, uh, Ms. Henyer would not sign our checks, the checks that the board authorized for legal work that we did. So, we of course can't take that case, because we're suing. And we're only suing because we would like to get paid from over two years ago. We haven't been paid in two years, over two years.
And I'm glad you could bring that point up, actually, I'm going to ask you if you can share with, uh, the residents the status of your payments, as well as, wait, what, attorney? So, I'm going to ask you to share with the residents the status of your payments and it's been described to the community that you've charged anywhere from $1 to $2 million in bills. So, I want to add that, I want to just ask for your, uh, status on that, just for clarification.
Well, if, if Ms. Henyer made that representation, that is another misrepresentation and not true. Of, of, of course, they're not that. They're, it's, it's ridiculous to even.
It won't work the long way. You can't, um, turn the camera right.
We haven't handled any of these cases and we haven't been paid. Ironically, we were paid for a while and then when the referendum was put on the ballot and the people voted to recall Ms. Henyer, she stopped paying us. Now, the courts, for whatever the court's reason, uh, said that it wasn't a valid question, which we disagree with, but, uh, the people spoke, wanted her to recall and then she caused retribution to our firm by not paying our authorized bills that the board executed.
Thank you very much, I yield to trustee Brown.
Okay. You are our legislative council and you have not won eight cases for the Village of Dalton, so maybe you can shed some light on that as well.
So, let me, let me just go back. John Murphy, the, the other partner in the firm, he was the village attorney under Mayor Riley for many, many, many years. Uh, and, uh, of course, he was, he was dismissed by Ms. Henyer and we have won, our firm has won many, many cases for the Village of Dalton and stopped these excessive legal fees and excessive payouts to plaintiffs. Uh, you have one case pending against you now for $33 million. And, and that law firm has now gone to court and has filed, uh, a very, very interesting pleading outlining what the.
Aye. Trustee Jason House?
Aye.
Trustee Belgium?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Next on the agenda, I will read it to record as it is on the agenda. Uh, number two, refer the Delgado Law Group to the appropriate agency for inappropriate conflict of interest. The Delgado Law Group has been the village prosecutor for over two years. During this time, that law group has appeared to, has, has filed appearances on multiple state and federal lawsuits against the village, Mayor Henyer, the board of trustees and the village corporate authorities and continues to defend his matters. Within the last year, the Delgado Law Group has filed appearances and prosecuted or defended matters in opposition of the corporate authorities, specifically the majority of the board trustees. The Delgado Law Group has billed the village tens of thousands of dollars for legal work and in opposition of the corporate authorities. This is a direct conflict of interest and shall we refer to the ARDC requesting an investigation into this conflict of interest? Uh, so I request that this be placed on the agenda, specifically because, uh, the attorneys should be working in conjunction for the village. In this case, the board majority, uh, has made our most very clear and yet cases continue, which cost this village money. And we feel this, I feel this conflict of interest, so, uh, again, motion that we move forward with, uh, requesting legislative council to file this, uh, conflict of interest. So, that's my motion. Okay, hearing motion and second, over for discussion.
I have a question, so, um, in reference to the ARDC, which we, for me, I know is, um, filing a complaint against the attorney, um, will this, um, be taken care of, or how does that work?
My final request would be that it be done, um, yesterday, but to our audience attorney.
Yes, uh, this will be done immediately tomorrow. And if I could just clarify one other thing, as lawyers, when we're acquainted by the body, the trustees, we, we then work for the municipality. We don't work for the trustees, we don't work for the mayor, we work for the people, because we're the people as well.
All right.
So, when, uh, the, the Delgado Law Group was appointed village prosecutor, it is the opposite prosecutor's track, its track goes to traffic court. They're not the village attorneys. They should not be sitting next to the, to the mayor at board meetings. That's not their place. That's not our place.
We know that.
We're the legislative council, right now, we represent the board, but we represent the board for the interests of the people.
For the people.
You can't represent the mayor against the board. We represent the legislature.
Thank you very much, clerk. For instance, any additional comments at this time? Hearing none, I yield to clerk O'Rourke.
Trustee Norwood?
Aye.
Trustee Tammy Brown?
Aye.
Trustee House?
Aye.
Trustee Belgium?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Okay, next on the agenda, I have number three. Uh, motion to approve following invoices from legislative council, Olson, Stern, Murphy, Frazier and McGrath, from, for invoices from, from 2022. These are invoice numbers, 33340, 33333631, 33632, 33857, 33858, for a total of costs, $66,999.76, as well as invoices numbered, 34252, 34254, 34379, 34380, for a total of $56,688. These invoices were previously approved by the board at the June 6th, 2022 and August 1st, 2022, and were not paid by the mayor, by Mayor Henyer. There are currently pending matters in court, uh.
Can't hear it, the sound is out.
Versus Henyer, case number 2022 CH105111, OSMFM, are seeking to be paid the invoices that were approved by the board of trustees. The Delgado Law Group has billed the village on this matter tens of thousands of dollars just to defend this case. There is no justification to bill the village for these corporate authorities items that have been approved. Now, the reason that this was put on, placed on the agenda, as mentioned in here, this has already been approved by the board. Uh, it's actually pending in court and the defense given is that when the board approved it, we did not provide the specificity to which invoices were approved. So, this is just clearing up a matter that has already been voted, to make sure that the court is crystal clear on the board's intention. Having said that, I'll ask, um, I'll make the. Having said that, I'll ask, I'll make the motion for approval on this, and I'll ask for a second. Hearing the motion in a second. Almost thought I did hear the second. Hearing the motion in a second. I'll have any discussion. Hearing no discussion, clerk, yeah, I'll ask for a call.
I think, I'm sorry. We always hear that if they did the work, pay them. Or the attorney has done just that. He has done the work for the village, so let's pay him. Hey, you got that bag? Show us you got that bag. Paid attorney. Trustee Norwood.
Aye.
Trustee Tammy Brown.
Aye.
Trustee House.
Aye.
Trustee Belcher.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Next item on the agenda is a directive for the village administrator to be directed to provide an access key to village hall for each sworn trustee and the village board. This item is placed on there as grateful and as gracious as we are with our partnership, the board of trustees, and the residents, more importantly, I would say, the residents of this community deserve the access to village hall for meetings that are being held. So with that, I'm gonna, I'll make the motion. I'll ask for a second. Then I'm gonna add a question. I'm gonna yield to our attorneys on in terms of enforcement, because we know the vote is one thing, and enforcement is the second part. So after we get the motion second, I'm gonna ask attorney Olson to kind of outline the next steps on this one. So I'll make the motion.
Second.
Hearing the motion in second, we're in discussion. First, ask attorney Olson on next steps on this one, because the common practice has been the board votes, and then the enforcement part gets in the court, respectability is on record.
Thank you, Mayor Protem House. So some of the folks here will remember then the mayor locking the board out of the village hall and the board having to set up a table and lawn chairs to have their meeting. You know where that happens? No, except here. That just doesn't happen. The trustees are elected by the people, and they need access to the municipal hall as the village board does. So the board has not given, have been given access since that time. So that's why this action has to be taken. The village administrator works for the mayor and the board together. And the village administrator has to follow the direction of the board. And if he does not, he is subject to discipline by the board, suspension or termination. He must obey, as long as it's legal, the direction of the board. There are so many actions that we could run into court and litigate, but every time we do that, even if we're not billing you, the Mr. Delgado's firm is. So there's no need to reserve any more money out of this municipality for lawyers, to be quite frank with you. Whether this works or not, we'll see. But I think the next item on the agenda may hopefully take care of all of this.
Thank you.
So I'm not so. This is, when we sit up here, these are ordinances, meaning that they are laws that we put into effect. And these laws are obviously being violated on a day-to-day basis. So making this ordinance or a resolution for getting the key and either the mayor or the village administrator to do it, I'm asking that, at this point, we have authority to change the locks and bill them like everybody else do. I'm asking a question, but I'm very serious. I'm not joking, because we are here, and these residents, I'm so glad that you guys have come out. But this has been a stain on our community. There is no way that we should have to continue to come to the park. And then she doesn't even wanna give the park permits. So it's no way that we should be locked out of a place where we pay taxes, a place that we're allowing the village administrator to come in our town, in our township, and destroy everything that's going on. So I'm just saying, and hey, I don't know how far it could go, but on the word of this, I've seen goody locks over here a thousand different times. As many times as they keep changing locks, we need to call them to make sure that everybody has a key by the end of next week.
Received, uh, that. That's where you're taking funds from.
Yes.
Sorry, so I, with all due respect, I would suggest changing the locks at this time. I'd give it a bit, again, because that will create more time, more money, more controversy, another lawsuit. Even though she is withholding the trustees and the people from the people's house of government, which they pay for, I really ask that you hold on that until we work through this agenda and we give an opportunity to turn this over to other authorities.
That don't sound good. That don't sound good. Turn it on to other authorities.
It should be said that, time and time again, as the attorney stated, we were locked out of the building once before. And we did have to hold our meeting in the parking lot. But we also had another time where we entered the building and the mayor had the entire administration come and tell us that the lights were off. So they first told us that the lights were off. We had trustee Belcher, she had to call ComEd while we were in the building to ask ComEd if the lights were off. And we found out that they weren't. Then they tried to say that it was carbon monoxide or something. So they called the fire department to come into the building. So these are the things, the things that they do to prevent us from moving forward. We've all heard them being called secret school meetings, right? But it's not a secret. We're trying to have access to the building, the building that belongs to the residents. So that's why we are here. When I say that we are here to save Dalton, that's what I mean. We are here to save Dalton, to be able to have access to the building, as trustee Belcher stated. We pay taxes for it. There's no way we should be here. So as a board, we're hoping that they provide us access with this word that's been in place. But I know that we'll probably be here again next one. But we would, like you all, know that we are continuously making an effort. And this is our attempt to fight for what's right. So that's what we continue to do.
She's not here.
And I hope we have to continue to be here. We'll continue to see you every time. Thank you.
One last to you. It's so funny and childish. Our mailboxes are outside. Our mailboxes were placed outside to prevent us from going into village hall.
It's crazy.
Every time you go into village hall, you see everybody picking up their phone. They're calling, they're here, they're here, they're here. It's a shame that you can't even go into village hall to ask a question about insurance or possible permitting thing. Every time you go in there, all eyes on us. We outside today, went today to renew our insurance, constantly in the building while we're standing there. It's a shame an elected official is treated like an outlaw. So something definitely has to change. It has to change immediately. Thank you.
Thank you very much, trustee Brown. Having discussion, well, discussion at this time, I'll yield for clerk Key to do the roll call, please.
Okay, trustee Norwood.
Aye.
Trustee Tammy Brown.
Aye.
Trustee House.
Aye.
Trustee Belcher.
Aye.
Motion passed to provide keys to the board of trustees and the clerk.
Thank you very much. Item number five on the agenda, item is an instruction for the village administrator and or financial director are ordered to tender all payments made by the village for any reason, including Las Vegas junkets, the mayor's Tahoe car payment, security detail from June of two thousand twenty-one to present. Said records shall be tendered within fourteen days. Records of all expenditures, January first, twenty-three, through today, must be tendered within the next seven days by the village administrator. Failure to turn over the requested village financial record shall result in immediate suspension or termination of the village administrator.
Oh, wait.
All requested documents slash records shall be recorded and turned over to the board of trustees, specifically senior trustee House. This was listed on there, and we've come to many meetings, and we say we're not getting the information. And further, further, we have encouraged that the information be placed on the board, on the website. Because that's, there's no better transparent way to do it. For the purpose of this, we have to specify where we want it to be done, so that way it can be tracked. But I'll take it, we'll put it on the website. The important thing is that, right now, financially, we know one thing, finances aren't good. But specifically where we're at, that is still, we're still left in the dark trying to figure out where the finances are for the village. This information is critical to the village for the residents to understand where we're at, and further to make sure that, once we have the information, we can begin to create a plan on how we move forward. The last financial reporting that we received is September of two thousand and twenty-three. On that report, it shows that there are two and a half million dollars worth of checks that have been issued, approved by the board, and have not made it to vendors. Just sitting on this somewhere. That's completely unacceptable from my perspective, and I don't know if the board will share that sentiment. So I'll make a, I'll make a motion that we move forward on this. I'll ask for a second, and open for discussion.
Second.
Okay, trustee Brown, second. You up to discussion, anybody? Hearing no, no discussion on that. Clerk Key, please roll call.
Trustee Norwood.
Aye.
Trustee Tammy Brown.
Aye.
Trustee House.
Aye.
Trustee Belcher.
Aye.
Motion passed to order the village administrator and finance director to turn over all financial records to trustee House.
Okay, thank you, attorney Olson.
Just one follow-up on that. I don't know if the folks in Dalton follow all the TV that's going on in the last couple of weeks about the squad cars and work vehicles that were on the verge of being repossessed because of the seventy-six thousand dollar payment that was not made. Even though this board authorized the payment in May of two thousand twenty-three, you need to know that the mayor's Tahoe security detail card payments were made every single month. So, so, and I was on TV saying this, it is a deadly sin to think that you could have lost six of your police vehicles. And when you lose the vehicles, you lose the police officers too. But she chose to keep her payments and her security detail intact. I think that's important information.
Thank you. Very critical information there. What we can follow on that point. I'm gonna pause, we're gonna make a brief announcement, because I see one of our board officials. I'll tell you how much I appreciate the hard work, so I'm gonna make sure as I see them. I acknowledge, we have Mr. Willis Harris in the back, please. Thank you, apparently, for attending partnership. I did not acknowledge the executive director Stephanie, you haven't been said that as the executive director around...
She's out in the hall, I think.
Just wanted to give a...
There she is.
And if you don't mind, come on forward, not for speeding, just a question I was asking, is that a brief one? Please come forward. We'll move, we'll transition from here to item number six. All monetary payments made by the Delgado Law Group shall continue as the village prosecutor. The Delgado Law Group will continue as village prosecutor, but no other legal matters. I think we discussed that a little bit too.
That her payments was made up to date on her Tahoe when they were trying to take the police cars. That was seventy-three thousand, seventy-six thousand dollars that wasn't paid for a couple of years.
Hearing the motion in second, any discussion?
Yes.
Trustee Belcher.
I always think I'm gonna have to get. I guess my question would be, in reference to discussion, we know that this administration is not fine with following the rules. So I just want to make sure that any, and you have the list of the thirty-three pending litigation, that how do we enforce that you guys give that information so that the village won't be in default? And the reason I'm saying that is because we're gonna hear the narrative at the next meeting that the trustees did something, and, oh my God, they did this, and now that we in default and we didn't go to court for this or that. So I just want to make sure and bring it to a front before it even comes, because it's starting to be predictable now, things that go on. How do we make sure that, as a law firm of pending cases, that you guys get the information that you need? Because obviously, in the world, they're not providing the information that we won't be in default in any cases this meeting.
Trustee, that's an excellent question, and the people deserve to hear an equally excellent answer. And the answer is, we have a list of all the cases. We have access to the court files. And after tonight, we will, we will contact Mr. Delgado's law group and say, turn over the files so we can proceed to defend the people of Dalton. If not, then we will go to court and tell the judge of your actions tonight. And the judge will then take action and turn the files over. We will not let any cases go to default as they have in the past where judgments have been entered against the village. That is not what we do, that is not what we've ever done. And you can ask any of our mayor's boards, and they will tell you. So we will, we will take note of all these cases and make sure they're in good standing. Thank you.
Thank you. Excellent question. Thank you very much for that, trustee Belcher. Any additional discussion at this time? Hearing none of us, clerk Key for roll call.
Trustee Norwood.
Aye.
Trustee Tammy Brown.
Aye.
Trustee House.
Aye.
Trustee Belcher.
Aye.
Motion passed for all monetary payments made to the Delgado Law Group shall continue as village prosecutor, but not for any other legal matters.
Item seven on the agenda, discussion and approval of an intergovernmental agreement between the Dalton Park District and the Village Park. I'm supposed to, between the Dalton Park District and corporate authority for the village of Dalton. I'm excited personally about this. So first, I'm gonna make the motion, ask for a second, and we'll go into discussion. Motion.
Second.
Hearing motion in second. Items have been held up for the Park District, and I think this, I think this really kind of furthers some of the partnership activities that we talked about and the way that the village of Dalton will be successful, as I know we will be doing forward. It's gonna be due to partnerships, not only with the Park District or other legislative bodies within our community. So I'm gonna ask our executive director, please, to come forward, kind of express some of the experiences that you've had and challenges with the village of Dalton in terms of proceeding permits and other activities. I just that the Park District and the community is missing because of that. And then we'll let our attorneys kind of further the conversation.
Thank you, trustees. I appreciate you guys doing what you can to help out the park. We really appreciate it. And just to give the residents kind of a better understanding of what the park is experiencing, we have been, since I've started here in this position, May will be one year, we have been working on several projects to beautify our parks. We have eleven parks in Dalton. We have projects getting ready to start at five of them. The one that is most urgent is at Blackstone Park, where we are putting in a new trail, a pavilion, a new playground. So of course, permitting comes in when we have to dig and do these...
The sheriff department.
There are certain things that we need permitting for. So the digging, the trails, those things, we need permits from the village for the contractors coming in to do the work. So in this process, we have gone back and forth with the village. The village engineers, our engineers, have all approved the project. We have a permit with water rec that we need signed by the mayor, and the mayor is refusing to sign it. We have tried everything to try and work with the village to see what we could do to try to push this along. And short of them telling us that there really are no options, we just haven't gotten anywhere. So we really appreciate the board, you know, being willing to work with us to try and push through this. You know, this is your tax dollars. We want to be able to show you guys where your money is going. For the Park District specifically, we would see that in the parks. And not being able to make those improvements when we are servicing the same community is very discouraging. So again, thank you guys very much. So again, thank you guys very much.
Uh, I just wanted to add that, that the, uh, mayor refused to sign off on the agreed paperwork, uh, putting the Park District at risk. If, if this paperwork is not approved and signed up, the Park District will lose approximately a six hundred thousand dollar grant, six hundred thousand dollars. So, uh, Mayor Pro Tem House, I'd just like you to ask to amend the motion to, uh, direct you as Mayor Pro Tem to sign the, uh, intergovernmental cooperative agreement between the Park District.
Thank you for that, very, very, uh, I, I do thank the, uh, attorneys for the work and, and, and we have the attorney showing here, also the attorney for the Park District, um, Shell, how, what's that? Fountain. I'll say Michelle Fountain. Uh, I wanna thank that, this really is a collaborative effort, these are some, uh, some of the activities that happened, uh, when, uh, out, out, outside of the boardroom and some of the efforts that, uh, collectively, so I, I, you know, I made my statement of excitement, but I know the board also shares in that because we, we really do enjoy working with the Park District, I think. Uh, so I want to amend the motion as, um, as stated by Attorney Odomson, and I'll ask that we get a second on the amended motion.
Second.
So here, that motion is second, uh, the amendment being that the documentation can be signed by Mayor, by Mayor Pro Tem, and I feel so serving in this, Mayor Pro Tem, uh, uh, to get the process moving forward. So here, that motion is second by Trustee Brown. Any further discussion? Here, none else. Clerk Key for a roll call.
Trustee Norwood.
Aye.
Trustee Tammy Brown.
Aye.
Trustee House.
Aye.
Trustee Belcher.
Aye.
Motion passed to amend the motion to have Trustee House.
Thank you for that. We are to the eighth and fun, second to last point on this agenda. Um, this is discussion and approval of a resolution twenty-four dash zero zero two, calling. I move so quickly. So, um, thank you clerk, that's why I want to be close to keep, keep you correct. Uh, so the motion that was just voted on was to amend my original motion. Now we need to take a vote on the actual intergovernmental agreement. Uh, so that being said, yeah, we have the motion is second, I'll, I'll ask to be in clerk key for a roll call on the actual agreement, intergovernmental agreement with, um, Park District.
Trustee Norwood.
Aye.
Trustee Tammy Brown.
Aye.
Trustee House.
Aye.
Trustee Belcher.
Aye.
Motion passed to approve the intergovernmental agreement between the Dalton Park District and the Village of Dalton.
Item number eight, discussion and approval of a resolution twenty-four dash zero zero two, calling for an investigation of Mayor Tiffany Hinger. I will read this in its entirety, uh, and then the board, uh, something about the board members will have discussion on, uh, on this point to further explain, uh, the reason for this, uh, out, out of the making happen. So on this motion, whereas the village of Dalton Board of Trustees have become aware of numerous improprieties concerning the mayor's use of village funds, village credit cards, employees, and resources, whereas the village board has received evidence.
They're studying an investigation against Mayor Tiffany Hinger.
Village credit cards, has made payments to vendors that have been, that have been approved by board and has refused to issue the payment of those invoice to those vendors. Whereas she has used the stamp of the village clerk's name on payments without the village clerk's authorization, has issued checks without statutorily mandated counter signatures, and whereas the village board of trustees have received evidence that Mayor Hinger has improperly appointed village, uh, employees without the board's advice, advice and consent, has hired convicted felons, has used police personnel for her own personal security assail, which has caused vendors to value the hours of overtime, or millions within the police department, has taken lavish trips with village staff, and has caused the village to be in a multimillion dollar deficit. And whereas the mayor has consistently spent village funds for services without going out for bid or requesting any RFPs for various services, for example, bridge and tree services, home repairs, and other items not approved by the village board, such as an ice rink and the holiday, holiday decorations, which were not contained in the amount approved within the village's budget, or any appropriation ordinance in violation of state law. Whereas the mayor refuses to allow the board of trustees access to the village financial records, including banks, bank statements, payroll records, credit card statements, or documents concerning the village's budget, tax revenue, and tax levy. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and the board of trustees of the village of Dalton County in exercise of our home rule authority, as it requires follows. Section one, the foregoing resolutions incorporated herein as fully set forth. Section two, the village clerk is hereby requested or directed to send a copy of the resolution to Cook County State's Attorney, the United States Attorney for the Northern District of Illinois, the Cook County Sheriff, and the Illinois State Department. Section three, since any policy or resolution of the village of Dalton which conflicts with the provisions of this resolution shall be, shall be and hereby repealed for the extent of such conflict. Section four, this resolution shall take effect upon its passage and approval in the manner provided by law. That is the reading of this resolution. I will ask that we include Federal Bureau of Investigations in section two. So, my motion has, we approve resolution two four dash zero zero two as read, and that's for second.
Second.
Being a motion is second, I will yield, I will yield for a floor comment.
I just, oh my God. I'm just overjoyed, but I will say this, uh, instead of the investigation, the grown-up thing would be for her to resign, just get out of here, leave town, but she's not gonna do that. You have disgraced this entire village and also disrespected each and every one of us. So a grown-up would just resign and leave, but we know she's not gonna do that. So definitely we're gonna go to this, the next step further, but I think, uh, definitely for what's gonna happen tonight. Oh my God, I, I can't. It was very emotional.
Okay, guys, I want to meet you, be a little bit patient with me. I tried to summarize this ordinance, but I'd like to be politically correct. So we have a ordinance number twelve dash five sixty, and ordinance of the village of Dalton amending Title I Administration, Chapter ten, Municipal Finances, Section four, Contracts and Purchases, Paragraph C, Contracts over ten thousand dollars of the nineteen-eighty-eight municipal code of the village of Dalton. A, Section eight, General Contracts. The mayor or any other person designated by the board of trustees may sign on behalf of the village any contract authorized by the village board. No contract may be entered into without the authority of the village board. C, Contracts over ten thousand dollars. All necessary supplies and tools or equipment or any work or other public improvement which is not to be paid for in whole or in part by special investment or special taxation when the expense thereof will exceed ten thousand dollars should be led by contract to the lowest responsible bidder after advertising for bids in the publication of general distribution heard or distributed in the village or proposed. I said all these the same, RFPs. So you all continuously hear me saying for the last year or two, hey, bring the RFPs and filings. It's extremely important. With RFPs, we know, because of course we're not disputing that there's not work to be done in the village. However, we are in a seven million dollar, seven million dollar deficit, and we're there because these ordinances are not being followed. When we need work done, they should be presented by the board, it should be presented in front of the residents and in front of America. Everyone is entitled to know. Village of Dalton, ordinance number seventeen dash zero one four. All contracts which service providers in an amount greater than fifteen hundred dollars should acquire prior approval of the board of trustees. This is extremely important. We continue to say, hey, we're not opposed to the work being done, but we have to get the best pay for our buck. We cannot just continue to pay people ten thousand dollars for a thousand dollar service.
Mm-hmm.
We don't know how the, where the rest of the money is going, I'm gonna just say that, and it is our job to know.
So true.
This is what you call checks and balances. I continue to say, this is not a dictatorship, this is a democracy. As trustees and the legislative council, we are responsible for the finances. We are responsible for knowing where the money is going.
That's right, that's right.
So, again, we cannot survive like this. When contracts continue to be entered without board approval, uh, we have vendors calling us every day for non-payment. A lot of these vendors, we don't even know are doing the work. That's a problem. So again, guys, we are here to save Dalton. This, we will not survive like this. Let's save Dalton. Thank you.
Um, I just want to say, um, this is just the beginning. And I say the beginning because, um, this resolution, ordinance that we're about to pass is extremely important. It's important because we have thousands of other ordinances that's still not being followed. So when we take this stand, we taking this stand on the backs of twenty-one thousand people that are being affected by this. Uh, it's not to come into a board meeting and argue about what, what we're paying and who we're taking off. This is strictly about, my trustee board was saying, checks and balances. This is strictly about knowing what our tax dollars are paying for. This is strictly about the infrastructure. We had two major storms last year, and that money that we allocated through ARPA money was, uh, went to an ice rink instead of the start of infrastructure, that, infrastructure that could happen. When we get these, um, glorious statements to say, we got all this grant money and the bag is here and it's so empty, I don't know what to do, but we don't have any type of documentation of these grants. So we get these calls and what really saddened me is we received the email today about the beautiful flashes pop signs that we see around town. Seventeen thousand dollars we owe for these pop signs. My concern is not even that we haven't paid them, but that money should come through asset forfeiture money. And if anybody knows what asset forfeiture money is, you don't play with the federal government's money.
No, no.
So it's a lot of, um, we know documented misappropriation, and this is the four of us taking a stand for you guys. It's not about our personal agendas, this is about the village of Dalton taking a stand about what's being done correctly and right.
There's a, a good reason why two trustees are now here tonight. No one has spoken about them, and I, I, I'm not getting involved in politics in the village, but just to say, when these, when this, uh, resolution gets filed and sent to the appropriate authorities, uh, others will be looked at also.
You mean that they're gonna look at standing around in, in the halls, cause they should have been at the scene.
And one other thing, that there, there are many things that have not surfaced and the public doesn't know yet, and if you think you're in shock now, just pull out. So, so I want to commend, uh, since this is the last, uh, item, I want to commend the, uh, the board, well, they have to take the vote, but I want to commend the board for standing up and doing what's right for the village. We are here to, uh, help them. Our, our firm has a long history in, in Dalton, as we do in many, many, many of the surrounding communities, uh, where we, uh, we cause no chaos, we just help, help the community.
Thank, thank you for those comments, and I, and I do want to kind of, uh, just make, make sure it's known, I want to thank the residents here for the, the, the support, the mini house prize, and I want to make sure that we really stayed, that we really stayed that this was not a measure taken lightly. Uh, many people might say, what took you so long to do this thing? But as a board, we have our obligation, we want to try to work through things in the most peaceful manner possible.
Mm-huh.
This was, this is and was a last resort, and I think today we kind of figured this is be our last statement, because we cannot continue to pay for millions of dollars being wasted on trips and things that do not benefit the community. That's why we're here, so, uh, thank the community, the residents, and we want you to know we did not take this stance lightly. This is something that has been thought through thoroughly, and this is the only, uh, only effort that we feel we can take at this moment to move this bill forward. So having said that, we have a motion in the second, we'll close the discussion, and I'll ask clerk key for a roll.
Trustee Norwood.
Aye.
Trustee Tammy Brown.
Aye.
Trustee House.
Aye.
Trustee Belcher.
Aye.
Motion passed to, for resolution number twenty-four dash zero zero two, calling for investigation of Mayor Tiffany Hinger.
Is she safe, she wants the resignation for Tiffany?
Yeah. She's gonna leave town, that's her parents.
They're asking for Tiffany's resignation. Asking her to walk away and step down.
In front of the most important, uh, component of this meeting, which is public comment. Um, in gen, and both, in a lot of meetings, we try to be liberal, because we want to make sure that, we know the board meetings get silence everybody, and we want to be very liberal to make sure that this is a platform where everybody has the opportunity to speak. I will ask that conference be kept to around the three-minute mark. Uh, we'll wave my phone as we get to the first three-minute mark and just ask that we have women, please be mindful, those who have comment, we'll ask, we will ask to come, yeah, come, come down the middle, uh, middle aisle, and then we'll bring, uh, bring one by one to the podium.
Can you all tell if anyone else is streaming besides me?
And so I'm here as a resident, I'm very concerned about what's been going on, what has been going on. And so if anybody can refer back to YouTube to the May twenty-eighth, twenty-thirteen meeting, you will know that Dalton was broke in May of twenty thirteen. It has not gotten better since, and something needs to be done. There needs to be an ordinance in place so that no future mayor can spin as they want. And that should have been done a long time ago because you guys have power to afford. Meeting minutes should be, you know, within ten days after the meeting. And so I don't feel safe as well, but Murphy Olson, you're a law clerk, excuse me to put my comment, there was an attempt to remove Tiffany Hinger as trustee of Alfa Brown and Hunt, and so you failed again, this time, to remove her as mayor, and none of that money can be, be repaid back to the people. Do you see what I'm saying? And so you also make comments that the attorney should be sitting next to the mayor. During Robert Roberts' regime, the attorney sat next to him a full time. I also want to know what's gonna go wrong with the four million sixty thousand dollar I also want to know what's going to go wrong with the four million sixty thousand dollar grant that was taken out by, for the IEPA for water meters that residents never received? Yet, the ex-mayor was given a vote to have sole control over that money. And so things need to be in place, ordinances need to be followed. And I would also like to see a referendum on the ballot to end home rule in the village of Dalton. The village of Dalton no longer has twenty-five thousand residents, but the twenty-twenty census says that the village of Dalton has twenty-one thousand residents. Therefore, the clerk should be submitting information to see if we still would like home rule and there should be a referendum on our ballots to see if residents would like to remain with home rule in the village of Dalton. And so that's all I would like to say besides the fact that I would like water meterage removed. I'm tired of smelling feces every time I walk out of my door. They should've never had a class eight or a tip to burn feces and flood our sewage system with two hundred thousand gallons of sewage and profit and not pay taxes. And that's all I have to say.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Downs. I appreciate your comments.
You're welcome.
I'll ask, uh, Dr. Scott, please come forward.
Thank you everyone. And thank you for this opportunity. Um, this has been a long time coming. I am so proud of this board that sits here because I'm not a resident.
Quiet, please.
I am not a resident of Dalton. I live in South Holland, but my heart is for the community. Uh, I am Dr. Scott that purchased the, uh, over on King Drive, um, that has the free grocery store.
If someone tell me how to do it.
My goal was to, uh, expand services for the Southland.
Yeah, they really do.
Starting, of course, with Dalton because that's where we're located. I tried to work with the current administration, uh, failed, uh, for whatever reason. Um, and this has been a breath of fresh air, literally. Um, because it was very frustrating to want to work and, and get things done for people who need services. Not all of you, no. Dalton is a thriving community. And to have businesses that want to come in, that want to bring that vitality back where we can have, uh, programming and venue spaces and all of those things and services where we don't have to go to another community, um, and to receive pushback. I'm not serving liquor. These were all services that would benefit. I thought it was a win-win situation. You know, the current mayor, you know, talks about, you know, Jesus Christ all the time, but even he had disciples. You can't do it all by yourself and not to be able to partner or want to partner to do something great, to do something good. It bothers me when I hear, this is for you residents, I'm doing this for you.
My hand is getting tired.
Well, then why are you pushing me back when I'm trying to help as well? There was no coming together, there was no partnership. But now I can see with this board, a way forward. And I just, I, I'm, like I said before, in that tea with the trustees, the line had been drawn and I just look side to Sam.
Okay, I dropped my glasses.
I, I, I love the community, my heart is for the community. I'm grateful that I have a husband that supports me and I, I'm, I'm working for you. I'm working for you. No, I don't live in Dalton, but I'm working for the Southland and we are located in Dalton and, uh, that's what we plan to continue to do. Even though she has, you know, some ideas about taking the building, but God said no.
Look, I don't pretend to be no professional thing. I was just trying to show you all what was going on.
I apply for my license being long time. I don't have no response. I'm trying to sell my property, no response. I cannot even, I pay my property tax, I maintain my property.
Thank you, you're welcome.
I don't have no response to be exchange my license so I can sell my property to someone. That's what I'm going through, been almost a year and a half. Now I have my last business left, which one is Rinkis Bar and Cafe, which was established since two thousand fifteen. So we literally getting like no reason, we don't have no violation. Each and every single neighborhood we go to, that's one of the best bars since today to be peaceful, anybody can come and enjoy their drinks. But now we have facing the problem, they say you have so many headquarters, somebody get key inside or outside of the Rinkis property, which one is completely lie. We get harassing from the local police, every time we have more than like thirty, forty people, they come inside and they put the board orange board, we not gonna be allowed, we shut you down and we revoke your license. We have the deputy chief, Mr. Lacy, begging them, I have my security guy who's also with me. We have little arguments with two persons, we put them out there off the street, they're not even inside the establishment. We have Mr. Lacy coming inside.
I think he said that's his security.
I'm the person, that's the way he have talked with front of people. I'm the person who are the top of the mayor and I'm the person who can snatch your license. He don't have the license to take your license anymore. I work hard for my money and basically I heard from the street, the people talking, they want to be take my license away because somebody have a new bar, new liquor store is coming in the area without the permission of the Board of Trustees, he don't have it anymore. So guys, I'm literally going through this business and I'm doing eleven year business in Dalton. So how we can prove that somebody who want to do the business for Dalton, who can come with good community? I just need to be pro for justice. Every time I go in the village, mayor is not there. I call it administrative department, oh, we don't have no idea what you're talking about. I never get the right response from the people. Is that everybody feeling the same way when you have Dalton and you go in the village? So I hope we can do something and put the right people on board so we can have a next new mayor. That's all I can talk.
Good evening, everyone. Sharon Ripley, 25 year resident. Um, we have a long road because the elections are twenty twenty-five, they start February twenty twenty-five. So my question is, what do we do for an entire year when the new mayor wouldn't take office until the May of twenty twenty-five? What do we do and how do we survive in a town where, uh, the police are not necessarily for us? Um, how do we get through board meetings and her administration not doing what needs to be done or keeping things from you? So we're in seven million dollar deficit now. Will we be in fourteen million dollar deficit by February of twenty twenty-five? What can we do as residents, business owners to, um, maybe reach out to the powers that be? I know what you guys are doing with the investigation, but what can we do? Who can we talk to? Because there is no way we can survive her in this administration. Keith Freeman is the author of all the chaos. I have a petition out, uh, change that or remove Keith Freeman. I hit it together January nineteenth of this year. Simon, I mean, you know, he need to push, he has to go. So my question to you, uh, Mayor Protem, board attorneys, what can residents do and who do we need to reach out to? And maybe if you guys can put that on your, um, website so we can keep moving forward because we've been working for two and a half years. I mean, this is new. Everybody here, this is new, but we've been doing this since May of twenty twenty-one because we knew that she was not going to do the right thing. So I'm asking everyone, if you haven't signed a petition, you don't have to live in Dalton, just sign it. And we have to be more vocal, we cannot continue to not say anything or be afraid of her because that is why she's doing this stuff because people aren't saying anything. I mean, thank God for the YouTube community, they got that, uh, our local news and even national news now, uh, they're starting to pick things up, but this is hard and, and it's embarrassing. I mean, I mean, she doesn't represent me. She does not. I know how to speak. So can someone answer?
Um, so what, what we can do, couple of things, uh, we've been, we've been advising and requesting everybody to write in letters to state's attorney, attorney general, and thanks to the help of wonderful residents and the resident group that has recently formed, there's even a template letter that's been devised that can be sent out as one. We talk about security, we look out for each other. Uh, we really look out for each other, we band together and you have to be cautious, um, every day going out in the streets, you want to make sure we continue to stay together. Uh, part three of that, we survived for two and a half years and we've been pretty. Um, but the board is committed that we will survive as well. We continue to do how it means like this, tea with the trustees and we'll push forward. Dalton will be a thriving community, I promise.
Thank the board, I want to thank the board again for your compassion and your continued efforts to, uh, keep us together and get us where we need to be.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Mayor Protem, board, attorneys, and my residents. I'm Mallory Stubbs, former trustee for the village of Dalton. And I'm so glad to see everybody out here. And I have to say, a lot of the residents, they do this every day, our phone rings constantly. We're tired, but we not giving up because we refuse to let, um, Tahoe Tiffany take our community. I want to commend the board for tonight for putting that resolution together and the attorneys, and I do have a question, uh, Mayor Protem, when she come back and veto that resolution, then what do we do? We override it at the next one. So, and that's what I wanted the residents to know. Uh, at the next board meeting, she'll probably veto, uh, that resolution and say that this was a secret squirrel meeting that she was also invited to. Uh, and then the resident, the board have to come back and override her veto. So that's unfortunate and for the business owners, the business owners are catching hell out here. You have, um, Dr. Scott, she's constantly losing money, she have tax dollars to pay along with the residents. Residents, this is about us because without the businesses' help, taking, uh, over some of the burden for the taxes, that burden is gonna fall on us. So we all need to band together, come to one of her board meetings, you know, demand that she turn off the video, we don't want to see it, and tell us, what about our tax dollars? And I wanted to ask, how much revenue did the ice rink ringling and the tiny houses? How much did, how much did that, uh, Greenwood Falls, how much money did she spend for Greenwood Falls?
I don't think so.
Tell me. One point three million dollars.
I didn't see it. One point three million dollars.
And that's unfortunate.
That's for Greenwood Falls.
It looks pretty, but it's not residents' sound, it wasn't a sound business decision. We could've fixed our infrastructure with that. You just had a water tower to fall down not so long ago and, you know, we had water main breaks everywhere. You don't put the horse before the cart. You take care of your business first and then if you have a few dollars to do a party with, because that's all she's doing, equipping the funds supporting township. I thank you all. Have a great evening.
Greetings, trustees, clerk, residents, and the other. I am almost seventy-five years old. I need to have my butt sitted home somewhere, but this administration will not allow that. I cannot sit by and watch them ride over our citizens like the way they have for the last couple of years or so. Now, yes, Tiffany has been being investigated, but let's not forget, as attorney alluded to, she has accomplices. Okay? Let's not get blinded to the fact that she couldn't have done these things by herself. Uh, and also like to point out how she has weaponized the police that, uh, been alluded to by others. She has weaponized the police against individuals. She has had temerity to call individuals, many hours, target you for, it was like, yes, this happened to me at the last, so I asked the attorney, I was unable to find out what she said because I was weighed off by certain people I won't mention. But anyhow.
I think they arrested her.
Back to the pointed hand, this has to stop. She cannot continue to intimidate and, and, and gangster her way through this. I can give you some examples of some of the things that she's done that no sane person would do. Who the hell throws a hip hop concert in, in your children's home? I think it was in Rochester, she threw a hip hop concert, she was selling liquor and everything, and she was using foul hip hop lyrics. She was doing things like that. She has put, she has put up blue lights on some of the unauthorized cars and masqueraded as police or, or other law enforcement going through the city and she was targeted, not targeted, as her group going, using those lights to get through traffic. This is yet to be addressed. That is a federal offense. She hung, uh, home, home with security badges on code enforcement people and other unauthorized law enforcement in the city hall and used them to intimidate us early on in her administration. Where is the punishment for those things? You understand what I'm saying? There's a whole heap of things I could go through, but I'm going to tell you that, advocate for it. If I were Tiffany Hinger and if I was as innocent and as put upon and then misused by the residents and the trustees, who by the way, she's insulted each and every person that went personally and professionally and angry at the clerk. She has shamelessly, shamelessly insulted them and last, maybe she sicked her apartment as well. This is one of the most disgusting displays of this, this government, this government type of things I've ever seen. You don't do that. You do not put people out of the country like that. There are some people in here that she has called that name from the podium, some, several of us have been escorted off the building, our building by the way, for doing nothing but a party. She points, okay, but she's not, I was escorted out of that building.
Yeah, whoever said that can get off my line. Don't play with me.
For short, I'm talking too long. I got plenty to say and we'll be see you later. Have a good day.
Uh-huh. I do sad I don't know where to start, but I was one of those individuals that she did send the police. I've been here thirty-eight plus years advocating for the right activists, forty plus years before I got here. I started doing it when I was doing it eighteen years old, period. I came from a family of sturds. And for her, I had never seen no mayor utilized or public to the park. And for her, I had never seen no mayor utilized the police department the way Mayor Tiffany Higgins inserted herself into this police department all the years that I could figure. I had to watch people go through things that I wouldn't have ever imagined. No human being would go there living in a community. And for her to actually think that it was absolutely okay to do all these things that she's doing, I started with the highest breach of public trust I have ever witnessed. That word witness, it carries a lot of weight because she made me a witness. And there's nothing she can do about it. Absolutely nothing she can do about it. And to infringe on civil legality throughout a whole community, disregard your legislative body, and do the things that she has done throughout this community.
Y'all ain't gonna send me no cash, no.
There should be a quiet mountain house. I start with C O L. Because I need residents, I need you all to know. Y'all, what your board just did here, you conserved the mayor and any other department head, any other dignitary, any other elected official right in your community, and then you sent it to the FBI. Because from this day forth, nobody. I remember a gentleman asked his brother on the interview if he was scared. And I called him a puffer. Do you hear what I'm saying? Right about nine. This unity for everybody, right now, I couldn't see a different skin color if I went blind and asked for my eyesight. Because you're all human beings. There's only one thing that eradicate not one of us from being a human being. And no one human being should ever try to eradicate a whole entire community. And the scariest part over the township, that's a hundred and ninety thousand humans that are indirectly affected by this. And like the young lady said, this will reverberate for the next ten to fifteen years if everybody doesn't keep taking a stand. Now, men that want to be on the island by themselves, they usually use the oar. Right about nine, a boy tapped her ashtray whenever she got coming. But to each and every one of you all, I had some hard days and I'm sure some of you all picked up on it. But what I've been doing is just like what you all been doing. You don't worry about the nine hour, because sometimes you pull it off in the nine hour.
Okay, y'all gotta excuse me. Number one, this is a long walk and it does suck, but people with disabilities that I had to walk all the way over here because we should be able to use the village hall because that was a long walk for me. And I had to walk for so, Tiffany Higgins, that really sucks. I just like to style. It's gonna take me a couple more, a couple minutes because I'm very passionate. And I haven't been out to Saturday at the house in a long time. But I had to come to this meeting today because this meeting really meant a lot to me. I am about a thirty-four year resident of Dalton. I moved to Dalton about nineteen eighty-nine. And when I moved to Dalton, I was one of the first colored family on the block. I actually live across the street from Tiffany Higgins' old house. So when I moved there, I was the first colored family on that block. So when she say that she grew here, so I grew here. Because I was in the neighborhood way before she was. And I'm very passionate about my city because I grew up in this city. And what she's going to this city, it really, it pisses me off. I'm just gonna be very honest. It pisses me off because I still live in this community. And what she's going to this community from when I grew up here to now, and when I see what she's done to our community, it angers me. It angers me and it upset me because I helped her with this campaign. Jason came to me, he asked me, he said, Vivian, he said, I know that you have HR experience. He knows that. I have a master's degree in human resource. I'm in human resource for over twelve years. I had an issue, illness, I'm not in human resource right now because of my disability, unfortunately. I had brain surgery. I have cancer, unfortunately. So her charity pisses me off. Another thing about Tiffany, she had that cancer foundation. I'm a cancer patient. I have to start radiation March the fifth. Could it help me? But no. Did she start? What she do? She still running, right? Something that could have benefited me, a resident, right? But no, did I get benefit from it? No, I'm a resident. I had to walk to this building, right? Did I get, do I get my taxpayers' money? No. So what Tiffany's doing is wrong. I helped her with the campaign. I helped her with it. I helped her make phone calls. I did a lot for Tiffany with this campaign. I'm supposed to be the HR director. So let's take it all the way back. When Tiffany asked me to help her with her campaign, I gave Tiffany a PowerPoint presentation. Look it up. Ask the FBI to check her email. Ask Dorothy Brown, did she interview me? Because I helped her. I helped her because she had a vision for though, and a vision that Tiffany had, she didn't fulfill. When people said, why did we vote for her? We voted for her because she said she wanted change. And the change that Tiffany said that she was gonna bring, she didn't bring. So when people say that, oh, y'all just stupid, y'all just fighting for whatever, y'all voted for her. Look, we voted for what Tiffany was, what she, before she came into office. We voted for the trustee that she was. We voted for what convention that she had. We didn't vote for the Tiffany that we have now. We voted for a different Tiffany. So when y'all standing there and y'all say, oh, well, y'all get what y'all get, that's not what we voted for. That's not what we wanted. We been fighting for this for two years since she been to office because we knew right away that what Tiffany was doing was not right. So when I said residents, we been here for the long haul because we saw it right away. And it's not fair to us that everybody else is not fighting with us because y'all been sitting here from the beginning. Y'all just don't want to say nothing and stand up to it because y'all feel like if one politician is still in an unconscious position, she should be able to do it. That's not fair. And that's not right. And us residents, we see it. And we should be able to just stand up and take it because everybody else is still. Just because everybody else is still does not give a...
She's trying to get our attention now.
And it's not fair. And until we get right, until she gets able to be held accountable, and until she handle the fight, we shouldn't be able to take it. And she shouldn't be able to just cancel meetings whenever she wants to. We shouldn't have to hold a meeting here. We should be able to hold a meeting wherever we want to. I'm on bad breath. I shouldn't even have to come out here and stand up for what is right in our town. I should be able to be at home. I started peeling a lot of radiation, March the fifth, I should be at home. But I'm coming out here to fight for what's right for our residents because we deserve that. Thank you.
I'll see if she need a ride.
You hear? Okay. I want to acknowledge that for the personal challenges that we've gone through. In the last, in less than the last two years, three brain tumors and all the different services. So when we talk about a lot of people, I will ask, how do we as a board do it? You are an inspiration to me.
She's been through a lot.
I know there's citizens who are grateful. I mean, if you can see that strength and that power, and some of those challenges, I just wanted to acknowledge and say, thanks, it was a board nonprofit. Thank you.
I was going to say, rah rah rah, I am so happy. I'm one of those people that was actually going around saying, well, what are you going to do?
Do you need a ride home? You need a ride home? You need a ride? Okay, I got you. I'm gonna take you home.
I was one of those people that was going around robbing, telling myself and other people, what are we going to do? It doesn't appear like anything is really happening with our trustees. It appears that she was walking all over them. And I am proud of you because you handled it like a crew that really knew how to respect yourself and the residents. And I thank you because we did have little kids and we did actually talk. They did listen to us and that's the most important thing of all. You may not have replied to us, but yet still, we did see something. And at times of time, we knew things would actually happen. And I'm thankful for that. During this week and last week, I was working with Harvey doing some projects that they have going on. And one of the projects that they really have going on is with the Ventura. And they have a retention hunt going on. You know, I believe in networking. I know we have our situations, but we could not, as residents, do it all by ourselves. We did have to have someone to actually step in and talk. And we did need lawyers. And we did have that kind of money as a resource to actually get a real lawyer like we wanted to really have. So we can do that rah rah and jumping up and down. But what I'm seeing right now is I want us to listen to Ryan. Ryan is from Harvey. And I think, as I said earlier, we need to learn how to network.
I think I remember him.
On in other areas because we can be supportive of them too. So this is Ryan. Ryan is from Harvey. I would like to introduce him to you in that manner of telling you about some of the things that's happening there. And it's kind of changed the subject a little bit, but sometimes it helps, okay?
Yeah, welcome. I'm the head of the Harvey Historical Society. And I was so honored to meet these Dalton ladies. I came to the Saturday meeting and he was here with the trustees. So I would say, I don't know, I was just, I've been floored in talking to Harvey residents. Some of you may know, we have a mayor who does actually a lot of worse things than Tiffany. He just is very quiet. So unfortunately, we're very jealous because we're like, wow, you guys have done such a great job of getting media attention and, you know, finally getting people to interview us, not the corruption. So we're hoping, you know, to get some of that same momentum to carry over Harvey's and these other towns. But I have to tell you, it really is a regional thing. I would like to see us, and I know these Dalton ladies are passionate about it too. I see Mary right there. It's a region, we have to come together as a region. These ladies invited me to the Lansing Phillies meeting the other night. We went there. They had a great uneventful meeting. But I mean, the problem is, we've been seeing this for years. I mean, my family roots in Harvey go back to Wasos, that's my great uncle, my grocery store. And, you know, people say, oh, well, we can't help as a region. We lost the jobs, we lost the factories, you know, that's why. And, you know, people came from the city for the projects. They didn't know how to live in the South. We have all these excuses as to why the Southland is not successful, you know? I don't buy them. I think that we can be, and we are, successful, diverse, happy region. Honestly, I see our number one enemy is corruption. I really do. Especially being from Harvey, you know, I get all the flack, right? Why do you live there? You can't live anywhere, you know? Yeah, you're from that area, but like, you know, you're crazy. Why'd you go back there? I love Harvey and I love the Southland, you know? People like Tiffany and our mayor, Chris Clark, and so many others, they profit off of, I call, it wasn't me, someone called these folks poverty pimps, these politicians. They make, not my term, sorry, I was passing out there. They're making money off of being the Southland poor and a mess. I mean, just drive to Harvey, our streets are horrible. Is it because there's something wrong with Harvey? No. If we had a halfway decent government, I mean, Harvey's in such a great real estate position alone. I mean, that alone would, you know, ensure that it does well. So I just like to see all of us come together. Naomi did mention one of the things that we have the seventy million dollar project that you probably have never heard of. How many of you know about the big Pace Bus Depot? We have the regional transit hub for the whole Southland. It is at Hundred Fifty Fourth and Park. Okay, so we have the metro station and we have the Pace Bus Depot. Our mayor has done his job as Mr. Dictator. He's acquired one in Tiffany, but still, he likes to control information. So that's probably why you didn't know about it. So that is a huge project. Metro's supposed to totally redo that station and has not taken any feedback at all. So it's just one of the many issues that we would love to have, you know, you guys come onto our meetings. We're going to come to your meetings and support you however we can. But I'm just so inspired by all of you Dalton. So thank you. Keep up the good work and bravo.
Good evening. I'm Reverend Sierra Bay Chandler. I'm a reverend, but I stay within my three minutes. First, I want to empathize with everyone in this room because I know I've been following the news and following it. My heart and my prayers goes out to our community. Well, I am born and raised Chicago. I've lived the last eight years in Dalton and I am also a homeowner in Dalton. I'm also raising five kids. I have one off the college that graduated from Florida Ridge, but I'm raising five other kids in Dalton as well. My husband is in the audience. And my concern is, while I'm equally concerned around the corruption that's impacting our community, I'm equally concerned about the violence in our community. This is a distraction. When, I don't know how many of you all have ring, but I have ring. And every day, I'm seeing gunshots. Did you hear the gunshots? My children, my, I have a six-year-old. No, no, he's eight now. Got an eight-year-old. And he knows the gunshots that sound like. And that's not normal for our children. And it's not normal for our communities. Not only is it the violence issue, we have a reentry issue. Do we have resources for those who are returning home from prison? So, and I also just want to like please ask that when we talk about formerly incarcerated people, we want them to have jobs because all formerly incarcerated people, they can work in government and they can work in, and they should have opportunities
Second chance.
And reside and thrive in Dalton as well. So my question, and you might not be able to answer it tonight, but I encourage you to, matter of fact, I want to hear back because I'll be reaching out to all of you. I want to know, what is Dalton's plan while we address this? But what is the plan to also address the violence in the community? The plan to address reentry in the community? And the plan to address the other issues of people being unhoused and just dealing with the issues below that low-income black communities are dealing with? Thank you.
Trustee Beltrane's trying to get the mic to work. She wants to comment.
Can you hear? Okay. Thank you for coming. And I definitely understand what you're saying. I'm gonna say this, and I probably don't ever give this lady credit, but I'm sure that you know that your current mayor has made the Village of Dalton a second chance C that you may not know about. I don't think anybody up here sits on the board to say that we're not about giving people second chances. It's a time and a place for everything. The Village of Dalton does have jobs. There are people that have businesses that could probably provide jobs to people that businesses that's being closed down. So everything that happens, it may seem like a distraction, but it's always another moving part that happens to some things. So there are people that I would say that maybe second chance programs, but those people should work in public works.
Not in people's houses.
Issues, and I hate to bring it up, but a convicted sex offender was hired. That type of media attention, you can't have people going into someone's home under those backgrounds. So when you say that, and I welcome any of your emails, I think there are a lot of possibilities in Dalton. It's just about how they're being implemented. The guy, Mr. Ware came to one of our team with the trustees. They have a program on Hundred Forty Second. So Dalton does have things. It's just about knowing about some of the things. With the violence, I would say, like I said last month, I'm saying again, we need more police. We put police in the budget and they walk around or go to Vegas or go to Washington, wherever they're going. But they're not supporting the community as they should. So those are things that we don't take lightly, but we're trying to answer or help as much as we can. If that may give you some relief, be a compliment. Excuse me? Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. Mayor?
Good evening, all. And I must say, it is absolutely awesome to see you out here tonight. And I hope everyone will take something positive away from this. I love it, I go to my trustees. We bust, we fight, we agree, we disagree. But in the end, we always come to a conclusion that is best for Dalton. I implemented a committee and they didn't know I was going to do this, but we're called the Advisory Board to the Trustees. And they're in the audience, we're not gonna necessarily, I would, if they wanna stand, I would let them do that. But the trustees talk with us. We bring back things we hear from you. We tell the trustees what the residents, because it's only four of them. They can't talk to all of us. They can't talk to all of you. I, I make them talk to me, so it's different. But I would go back and tell them, anything, any problem, anything you have. Now, whether or not it happens, and they don't mean, but I would take it back, and they know that. So we are working for Dalton. If you're on Facebook or in the Lansing Journal, five of my members, plus Ryan, went to the Lansing board meeting. We are going to hit every board meeting of seventeen municipal houses. Or sixteen, because it's only seventeen, you don't have to come to Dalton. But we're going to ask them for their support and their consideration, not with Dalton being the focal point. We're trying to put a rally together in April, so I want everybody, I'm trying to give you some sunshine. Because the township is everybody. It's networking. It's about all of us. Dalton, yes, that is our main concern. But other people have issues too.
They have the county sheriff's outside, I believe.
They will help you just because they want your help. So keep that in mind, we'll keep you posted. Now, to divert, divert off to something else, and I don't know who will be able to help me. There's a five-story monstrosity being built on the corner from where I live. It is a liquor store on the first floor. I guess three stories, or at least two stories of an event hall. This is on Lincoln and Sibley, where the old animal hospital was. And I have bitched about this before the first brick was turned. But I'm learning some things. I've never seen a building permit posted. There are codes, I've got them in my bag. There are building codes that require this. There's also a wreckage clause in that, that says they must post a twenty-thousand-dollar bond in dimmifying us from harm, but it must be approved by the president or our mayor and the board of trustees. Nobody on this board approved anything, so do we even have it? I'd like for the attorneys, and I applaud you, and thank you so much for being here. But to let me know, or my board know, is there any way we can get a stoppage? Because I want to crack, I got a hammer, but the first brick, they're breaking that anyway. Thank you.
For those that don't know, that's the shingala. Shingala.
Okay, so we will be concluding today's, uh, board meeting. And the board will be available if anybody has questions thereafter, but we'll conclude at the formal meeting at this time. So I motion that we adjourn. Here, motion by trustee House, second trustee Belcher, clerk.
Trustee Norwood. Trustee Tammy Brown. I, trustee House.
Aye.
Trustee Belcher.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned at seven twenty-six.
Seven twenty-six. Thank you all for sharing my life with me. Hope that you got something out of this. And pray that we be what God wants us to be. Thank you all, be safe, stay well, and be blessed.